When we're recording and ready to go. All right, welcome this afternoon to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. And as we try to always start off, we start off with a prayer, reading or thought, and a pledge of allegiance. And we open it up to anyone in the audience who would like to participate with us in there and doing one or either one of those. Any volunteers? Always the hardest part of the whole thing. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Any of the commissioners, any commissioners have a preference one way or the other? With one or either one of the others, I'll take whichever one's not taken.
I'll do a reading today.
All right, thank you.
I don't think we're going to have another commission meeting until after Martin Luther King Day is celebrated on Monday. So I'm going to read a couple of quotes from him. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. And injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. That's my thought.
Thank you, very wise words. If you'd stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll see that we don't have a consent agenda on here. It's just regular agenda. We're going to be doing that into the future. There's a couple of reasonings why. A lot of times we'd have multiple numbers, two ones, two twos, so on and so forth. And there seemed to be some confusion that we heard about with even some of the public that would come in and say, I don't know if you're on one on regular or one on consent. And so it's a little easier too for Alice as she kind of organizes things. So what we'll do is everything will be published on a regular agenda. And then we will go through it like we normally do. And we will take things off of the regular agenda and put them onto a consent. The consent will mean that all three of us agree to that, as if we were voting on that. And so we'll go through that process right now. Right now on our agenda, we do have, we have 13 items, but we'll go to number nine. Are there any items from one through nine that we need to hold? I know we need to hold eight, eight for action.
Okay, I'll hold a brief discussion for six.
Number six. Okay. Any others?
No others for me.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Commissioner?
Number eight, I'm not clear on that history.
Okay.
It might handicap.
Okay.
So we might need to hold that.
Yep, we got that one held. So that means one, two, three, four, five, seven, and nine, we will now move to consent by all three commissioners as if we voted on them.
Make a motion that we pass those numbers?
Nope, they just stay on consent. They'll just stay as consented to. All right, let's move then to item number six, which we pulled off for discussion. This was to approve and authorize the commission chair to sign an agreement with the National Association of Counties. NAECO is their acronym.
I just had a simple question on this. So my understanding is that we just got an invoice from them, and so this was placed on. And, you know, NAECO is an organization. You know, I haven't been too involved, so I can't necessarily speak to all the value that they provide. But there's lobbying on behalf of the county, but also in counties throughout the country. But also an opportunity for us to go and meet other county officials and be educated on county issues at their annual conferences. And I just didn't know, my sense is, I My sense is, I think their events have been canceled in 2021. And I don't know for sure. So Commissioner, I don't know if you had heard that specifically, or whether they are still gonna host them. And, you know, I, I know we still pay for those separately, so we have to register. So maybe this, these fees are more kind of the association dues, but I just wanna at least ask the question of, you know, are we comfortable with what we get for this? And that it's still the same number in 2021, as opposed to a normal year?
Yeah, I, um, I see value in that, in that, uh, that, that membership there on multiple levels. I, I am on, I'm on, on one of their boards for the agricultural steering committee. Um, we have regular meetings, uh, throughout the year. And then the biggest, the biggest bang, I think, that you're, you're talking about also is the one where we typically will go back to our association meetings, which happen in February or March. Um, and then we have a chance to meet with our federal delegation as well, but also go through, um, uh, a training that, that happens there and, and meetings, which I, I've, I've been looking, cause I was wondering if, what they were gonna do, and I, I cannot see that they're gonna do that. But we usually pay, like you said, we pay for them separate. And, and, and so, um, you know, NACO is, is one of those associations, like any of them. Um, probably the more you jump into it, the more that they can help out. They have a pretty robust, uh, um, websites and information. And anytime I've called back there for just informational bases on comparisons of counties, between counties, um, they've been extremely helpful. Uh, and so I, I do see members, I, I do see value in being, uh, you know, a part of the National Association there. And then, uh, more than likely, we will not be spending any money, as, as I see right now, um, for going and traveling like we have in the past.
Got it. So you think that the, so in terms of like the committee meetings, those can still happen virtually. Maybe they'll do an event, but it'll be virtually. And but typically, we've looked at this, the membership separate from any of the events.
Right.
Each year.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, okay. That, that was the question I have. I, I wouldn't make a motion to approve item number six.
I will second that number, item number six.
I got a motion and a second to approve, uh, agenda item number six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes, uh, three zero. Okay, number eight is to receive, uh, the recommendation proposal for the, uh, RFP, and Robert Baxter is here. This one is kinda been sitting out there a little bit, and he can, he can kinda go through it and explain what this is about.
Uh, yes, this is an RFP for, for plan review permitting and inspection services. The, uh, the committee, uh, met and came up with their, with their top three. They, they were unanimous on number one as, uh, West Coast Consultants, or WC3. Number two is, uh, Schum's Co. Associates, and number three was Aoka Engineering. That's a little bit unusual in that the committee is, was recommending, uh, that the Board of County Commissioners select from the, the top three, and that they select one or two of the remaining top three firms to be approved, uh, to be used as, as backups, as needed. But that we, we would actually only be awarding the, the contract to, um, to the one that is selected.
What are the services that they're providing?
This is, I don't know if there's anybody, may Bryce can explain a little more detail what, what that's about?
Uh, Bryce Armstrong Community Development. So this is just a contract that we have to have in place to, uh, provide, um, backup options for our, um, building inspection division. Um, we usually do most of that, if not all of it, in-house, our, our plan reviews, our permitting, our inspections. On occasion, um, whether it's a complexity of a, a job or just manpower, we get someone who, who leaves the, the job, uh, and we have to recruit for the new position. We have some, someone in place to, to do those mandated services within the timeframe specified by the state, so.
Okay, that, that helps.
We don't use, utilize it a lot, but we need to have it in place.
Is, is this a, like a subscription that we're paying for them to be ready, available to provide the services as needed, or is this scheduled?
I think it's just a contract, uh, in place that, and we have funds in place to pay them as needed.
Okay, okay, all right.
So, so on this, um, plan, the plan review and so forth, I'm gonna understand the purpose of it. And that is so that we have somebody in, in, because you only have so many days before you're out of statutory compliance. And so, if, if they get in a tight spot, they can ask them to come on board and, and do the plan, plan review. What, what this is not, though, is it's, is it's if, it, it's not a plan review necessarily for, uh, an, an out, an outside entity that's coming in and doing a development or doing a permitted process in which they may have an architect or an engineer that they would like to go through, but they still have to meet the qualifications. I just wanna make sure that, that that's stated with this, because there's, there's two things that, and it, and I know we've had a lot of conversation on this, Bryce, but there's two things. This one here is more of a catch-up on things that there, that we were normally gonna do on our own, on the plan review. But if there's other plan reviews that are going on in the sense of for subdivisions or for applications for, for permitted, permitted processes, um, that one can go a different route than, than just through the one person, the one company that we're talking about.
Correct. This is, this, this would only be utilized when we initiate it for a need that we determine. If the applicant has a, a need, um, that they wanna have it reviewed outside of, of our process, they would have the ability to go to anyone who's qualified. And we have a list of, of those that have shown to meet our qualifications. That's not the only list we have. If someone has someone that we, you know, we haven't used, and they bring in their credentials and it meets the criteria for the project, then yeah, they can absolutely use, use anyone else.
So Bryce, one question then. Why, I mean, there's not a lot of work on this. It's probably what, two, two or three, maybe $4,000 a year? I think it was last year that this was used.
Correct.
And is there, is there wisdom in going with one? Is it because the one, WC3, came in less? And they, they, they would charge less? Or could we say we recommend, and then you, they could use all three? All three of them are, are accepted? Or, or, or two of them, the top two? What, what's, what's your preference there?
Um, I, I think we're fine, just even if we wanna go with one, I think the, the idea is, uh, of having the other two as options contractually, as if, for whatever reason, we get in a position where, um, you know, the, the demand is such that, that it's needed, that, that those are an option without having to go through a formal review of their applicant, of their qualifications.
Okay.
But I, I think history has shown that, that one would be sufficient if needed, the top one.
It would be good to have alternatives because they're, and up to this point, I was meeting with a lot of different companies, businesses. And they felt that some companies were more, uh, difficult to work with than others. They didn't, uh, come, in their, in the customer's view, the builder's view, they weren't getting inadequate support. I won't name which one, but, uh, that's why I'm thinking that maybe more than one would be a, a lot, should be allowable for these, um, business interests.
Sure. Yeah, that would, uh, always be a, a good option to have.
Okay.
Have options.
They're not, but basically, they're not painted in a corner, they have to use one company or the other, then?
This contract would be who we would.
Recommend.
We would utilize when, when we need to. And if there's a situation where, you know, we're, uh, slammed and, 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 uh, our top choice is also, uh, restricted with their availability, then we have someone else that we can quickly go to, to, to get a, an inspection within forty-eight hours, as, as required by, by state, if, if needed.
So, so this one, just to clarify, cause I, I, I think I know where you're going. This one is, um, they come in for a plan review. We, we would normally take it on ourselves. The individual who is submitting it doesn't care. They, they don't really care who does the plan review. They just, they just want the plan review done. And, and so, uh, if we can't do it, then we contract out with whoever this, whoever we select today. And so, the, the individuals don't really, they don't, they just want the plan review done, so they can move forward. The, uh, the thing that you're talking about, though, that is different, is if, if a developer or, uh, an individual that has a permit or wants to do a, a building, they come in and they have a preference. And they have a preference on, on, on what that looks like. That's the second part.
And that, yeah, there's been a complaint, there's been complaints that, uh, one, the review hasn't been equitable. And so they want the option to be able to go to someone else.
And we have that. Option exists outside of this.
Yeah.
So this option, this is the first one. Source, and we, they have options for others. Okay.
Second one, the second one, they can say, yes, we wanna go through, we wanna go through, let's say they have a specialty, uh, whatever it is, let's say it's solar farms, and they got some specialty on there, and they, they've been working with architects and engineers. As long as they meet the qualifications that we need with the certificates, um, then they can pick them.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
That was, thanks. That helped.
So I guess our, our preference then is, do we just select one, or do we select the one? Robert, give us a little counsel on this. Do we select the one with the other two, so that if, if needed, necessary, we don't have to go through this again?
Yeah, the way I'm looking at this is that we select one to have for a contract, and that what we're doing is, is creating a preferred, preferred vendors list, sort of. You know, that they've been, uh, vetted and cleared, and that we're okay with, with any of the ones, any or all of the ones you select, but we're only going to have a contract with one of them. And also because, because the amount is so low, you really only have to have a contract if it's over $2,500. And it's very unlikely that the backups would, would even come close to, to reaching that amount, that we would have to have a contract with them.
Okay. Either a discussion or a motion would be in order.
Um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve, uh, line number, excuse me, item number eight.
Second?
And so, if I can, uh, I got a motion and a second, um, for a little discussion, maybe amendment to that. Could we, could we specify that WC3 is the preferred contractor on this with the contract? They, they were the ones that took number one on it, and that the other two are, um, I can't remember what you called them, uh, preferred vendor or something, or they have that, that backup. Is that?
That, that, that meets.
Okay.
That meets it.
Yep.
Second still good?
I second.
Okay.
Yep.
I got a motion and a second on, uh, agenda item number eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, that passes three zero. I believe. That was kind of a weak aye, but I think I, I think I heard that over the phone. Okay.
Yep, I'm there.
You're there? Okay, thank you. In the way of our closed meetings, I know we need number ten.
And number thirteen, if we could.
And number thirteen.
Okay. I move that we strike agenda items eleven and twelve.
And I'm unfamiliar with them.
Are you, is there a second on that to strike the two that we don't need?
Yes, uh, second emotion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to strike agenda item number eleven and then the number twelve. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three zero. Now, if we can get a motion to set number ten and eleven, we can do those together.
Ten and thirteen, you mean?
Or ten and thirteen, sorry.
I move that we approve, um, and set time and location for closed meetings to discuss the items in ten and thirteen for immediately following this meeting and at this location.
A second, that motion?
I got a motion and a, and a second to approve and set the date, time, and location as, as stated in number ten and number thirteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes three zero.
Yep.
Okay. We do have, we do have a work session. It's a presentation, a quarterly report from the, from the Public Defenders Association, Utah County Public Defenders Association. Come on up.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm told that the TV in the room doesn't work, but, uh, you've got it on your screens. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Benjamin Young, uh, financial manager for the Utah County Public Defender. Uh, so I'm also gonna have Josh Esplin. Uh, he's gonna talk more the, uh, the cases and the data there. Uh, so I'll begin with an agenda. Uh, so the, the data that we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about the district court cases for the full year of 2020, then specifically break it out to just Q4. Uh, we'll also break that down by, uh, the number of cases by type and the number of hours spent by type. Then we'll show the cases by type for the juvenile, uh, cause they're in a little bit different categories. And then after that, Josh will turn the floor back to me. Uh, I'll go through the financial information. Uh, the financial information, uh, which will be an overall, and then into the three categories of expenses that we have. Uh, so pending any questions before we begin, uh, the last thing I'll say is, as we're going through the presentation, please feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions, uh, or concerns. Uh, we're happy to address them then. Or if you want anything in follow-up, feel free to reach out to us after. So I'll turn it to Josh to begin with, uh, with the, the number of court cases that we handled, uh, during 2020.
So, um, what we tried to do here, and we tried to do this, I think, you know, the end of, uh, Q3, when we, uh, gave our presentation, uh, for the budget, is we went through and we've started to delineate, you know, which level of offense based on case type. Um, one of the reasons for doing that is, uh, talking about the, you know, trying to give a, an understanding of what a workload consists of, rather than just a number, uh, of cases. Um, and so, um, you should all, I, I think with the exception of, of Commissioner Sakovic, have seen this before. Um, this is just updated to reflect, uh, 2020 numbers. Uh, which, you know, a little bit of information on that, uh, throughout the year in 2020, we talked about that being a lower year due to COVID, um, as far as, uh, appointments. Uh, however, what was interesting, um, after the year closed, is that, um, comparing 2020 to 2019, we actually had or were appointed on eleven felony cases more than 2019. Uh, we did have, uh, a hundred and thirty-one fewer misdemeanor cases. And, uh, and then we were down close to fifteen hundred orders to show cause. And so, um, that's interesting because the majority of the decrease in, uh, appointments, uh, was from orders to show cause. Um, and that's, uh, you know, speaking from a workload standpoint, um, you know, we did increase the felony cases. The misdemeanor cases were, were lower. We, we rate the hourly, um, need for orders to show cause less anyway. And so, um, total workload did not actually decrease, um, as much as, as one might expect. Um, what we didn't put on here, this is district court, uh, we do have the juvenile court, we'll go through that, um, is that we did retain from, uh, from Utah County twenty-four appeals in the district court. Uh, you'll see that there were three juvenile court appeals. Um, so, I don't know if there's any questions about the totals here.
It looks like, um, thirty percent of your work is under, or close to, thirty percent of your work is orders to show cause?
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll get down to the breakdown.
By hours.
Yeah, uh-huh. Um, and that's why if you look in the hours, uh, required, uh, which would be the column that's, uh, FH felony hours, MH misdemeanor hours, um, we do, uh, those are much lower, significantly lower than say, uh, you know, a second-degree felony person crime. And so each one's weighted that way as far as the amount of time, uh, required for that.
Josh, will you just remind me what those two are, like, what those acronyms are across the top?
Um, yeah, sure. Sorry, I can't see you, so you're just a voice. But, uh, so the, the type is, is essentially the level of offense. And so, uh, you have F1, that, that would refer to a first-degree felony, F2, a second-degree felony, and F3, a third-degree felony. Uh, the number category would be the number of cases, um, that we received for, for that particular type or level of offense. FH would be felony hours, and, and that would be, uh, the amount of time, controllable task hours, uh, that, uh, on average, you would, uh, need to, to provide effective assistance of counsel for that particular type of, or level of offense. FT would be the total number of, uh, you know, felony time, so the number of a particular level of offense multiplied by the number of hours to provide effective assistance of counsel.
So wait, so the FH is what again?
Felony hours. So that's a, that's the.
Every.
Per case?
Yes, per case.
So on the orders to show cause, it's eight point five hours?
That's an aver, so eight and a half hours is like an average. Um, there's not really, I, I mean, to get to a per case is part of the difficulty in describing workload. Um, where each case is fact specific, um, and, uh, and so that's something that's not controlled by us. So, you know, we don't, there may be some that are much less time, there are others that require more time. And so these are just averages to be able to provide effective.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm so myopic on this and you know I am.
No, no, that's great.
I've been focusing on this for a long time. I, 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 I'm just trying to get my mind around one orders, order to show cause being eight and, eight and a half hours seems a lot to me, seems like a lot. I mean, and I know that's an average, but I mean, walk, walk me through an average orders to show cause, uh, situation that would last eight and a half hours.
Sure, I mean, and, and, uh, you know, what I would say to that is an order show cause typically arises where there's an allegation that there's been a violation of some condition of probation. So maybe it was in a drug case, you were ordered to, um, do drug testing and you had a positive test. Um, uh, if a probation officer, there are rules that govern, uh, there's a statute on, you know, what they have to follow in, in bringing it to court. Once it gets to court, which is when we would be assigned, so there are in-house sanctions that they can impose um, by statute, but i- if it comes to us in the court, then, then that's the route that they chose to go.
Do orders to show cause, are they always before the judge?
Um, unless it's, it's handled in-house by adult probation and parole. Um, otherwise it, it always comes before the judge. And so, um, you know, there, there could be a number of allegations. Uh, I handled, uh, one on Tuesday or yesterday that was 12 allegations. And so an individual who is facing, uh, um, a probation violation or an order show cause, they have a right to an evidentiary hearing, um, so they can either admit or deny the allegations. Uh, if they deny the allegations, then it's set for an evidentiary hearing where the state would have to, um, provide some evidence to support the allegation. It's not a beyond a reasonable doubt at that point, it's by preponderance, um, that they provide that. But that, that would be a separate hearing that, that would take place. Um, and so from a defense attorney's standpoint, uh, that, that requires prep time, may, may require contacting witnesses or potential witnesses, tracking down, um, various, uh, records, uh, from say like treatment providers and, and things like that. A lot of the time that's, that's the case. Um, it requires meeting with the client, so going to the jail and, and going over, uh, their rights, going over the allegations, talking about the situation and, and, uh, where an investigation would need to take place or go, um, signing release to try to get, uh, documentation, that kind of stuff. Um, and so that, what, what's at stake generally speaking, um, on these, uh, felonies is that when the individual defendant was sentenced, the statutory sentence was imposed. So, uh, on a second degree felony, that's one to fifteen years, uh, in the state prison. And, uh, that sus, that's suspended and they're placed on probation. And so every time you come back on a probation violation, there's going to be a recommendation uh, from adult probation and parole and, and there are guidelines that, um, that outline kind of, you know, in this particular type of circumstance, this is generally what the recommendation would be. But there are a lot of, uh, cases where the, the recommendation is statute. And so that means that they're recommending that this individual go back to, uh, prison. And so in a lot of, uh, a lot of times that's similar to a sentencing hearing. Um, and so, you know, you, uh, you might find statements from family members or character references. You might have, uh, somebody that you contact to come in and speak on this person's behalf. You talk to, uh, you know, treatment providers and, you know, whatever it, it takes in that particular situation to make an argument uh, for something other than, than a prison sent, sentence. And so those are kind of the ways that it's in, it, it's more involved or it can be.
So, so the other question I have then is, last year when we were talking about this, um, we were, we were equal on, you know, felony and orders to show causes, one case and one case. And you did a reduction percentage, I can't remember what that reduction was.
And so that is, so if you go to the Indigent Defense Commission, uh, which has a, uh, you know, they put out a definition of what constitutes a case. They, um, according to how they define that is each order, order to show cause is counted as one case. Um, what we did is when we were trying to go towards, um, kind of the, the the national trend is, is to go to hours required, right? And so that's kind of what we did. So the reduction that we did is, um, uh, the studies that we were looking at for the hours required. Um, I, I believe the number for orders show cause was, uh, nine point seven or nine point six, somewhere around there. Uh, and so, uh, you know, we, we lowered that, um, to eight point five for the felony. And then because misdemeanors typically don't involve, uh, you know, a prison sentence, a maximum on a class A misdemeanor is a year in jail. So there's still, uh, potential for incarceration, uh, but it's not as, uh, as drastic or severe. And so, you know, we, we halved, uh, the felony there. Um, but, uh, the studies that we based that on, nine point six did not delineate a difference between felonies or misdemeanors. But we were trying to approximate what would, you know, based on anecdotal experiences from our attorneys, um, and, and just experience in general, what, what we felt would be a, 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 a number that, um, would be consistent. Um, I don't know if you have, if that explains.
Thank you. Because I was trying to separate that percentage versus the hourly, you know, and how that actually comes together.
Correct, correct. Um, anybody else, any other questions for me? The other commissioners, okay. So, uh, this is just looking at, uh, the fourth quarter. Um, and, uh, which, uh, types of cases and, and levels of cases we, we did, uh, get appointed on there. And it, it, you know, uh, I don't have each quarter, wouldn't have each quarter, uh, displayed here. But, uh, having been the person that goes through all the numbers, I can say that this, uh, total amount of cases from this quarter got us closer to those from first quarter. And so the, the dip was mainly quarters two and three. Um, and, and then it started to rise back up in, in the fourth quarter. And we had talked previously about, um, the courts, uh, because of COVID. Um, if somebody was arrested and booked but released at the jail, they were given a date to report to court. That, that, that first, uh, time that they go to court is called an initial appearance. And that's typically the hearing in which our office would be appointed if the, there's a request. And, um, the courts were putting those out ninety days, um, to try to avoid COVID. And so, um, I believe, um, it was November or October, uh, they changed that to thirty days. So we're starting to, you know, uh, I think in fourth quarter, we started to see some of those cases that were kind of pushed back. Uh, and that continues to go up. Uh, what what we still have and is not displayed here would be that we still have that backlog of trials. And, uh, you know, the latest that I've heard on that is there, um, our office had provided a list of, uh, cases that we would be able to, based on, um, consent from clients, um, do a, a kind of, uh, trial, trial, a, uh, practice. Not a practice, but a, you know, they would do all of the jury selection by, uh, video, by, you know, Zoom or WebEx. Um, and then the jury would be there, there'd be testing of all, uh, everybody involved, um, prosecutor, uh, defense attorneys. And, uh, you know, that list of, of trials or, or clients that would be willing to do that uh, was, uh, also shared with the prosecutor's office, um, for them to say which ones they would be able to do. And so those are supposed to be able to start, um, I believe the end of February. Um, that's just to see how that process works. We're still waiting on the Supreme Court, uh, to kind of change, uh, or give the green light on, on trials. Any questions on this? This is fairly similar to the first slide, so. Here you have the, the caseload by type, and so this is where you, you know, a breakdown, um, Commissioner Lee, where you can see that, uh, while fifty-five percent of the caseload is made up of orders to show cause, when you go to the next slide, which is workload by type, they are about twenty-seven percent of the workload. So that, that's getting into the amount of time necessary, uh, to provide effective assistance of, assistance of counsel. And, and it's important to remember that that, when we talk about time and the felony hours, misdemeanor hours, that is really only talking about controllable task hours. It doesn't talk, uh, it doesn't include, uh, in-court time, it doesn't include travel time, it doesn't include training time. Uh, those are just hours that are controlled by the attorney. All right, so juveniles, uh, cases, uh, you have the delinquency and child welfare, and then we had three appeals. Any questions on the caseload or workload statistics there or any of those numbers? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Benjamin Young again, financial manager. Um, so for a financial, uh, overview of the fiscal year, um, the one, one high number to highlight, uh, comparing the funding that we received versus our actual expenses. Um, you'll see on this slide, it shows that we're over budget by a hundred and eighty-four thousand with an asterisk, a caveat that, uh, in addition to the funding provided by the county, uh, for budget year 2020, uh, there was also the, uh, Mountain Land Association of Governments grant for a hundred and fifty-four thousand. And in 2019, there were extraordinary expenses that we had, uh, just absorbed, uh, as part of our, our 2019 budget that were, uh, then, uh, reimbursed by the county in 2020. Uh, so we had those funds available to use, uh, where we're a five oh one C three, any funds that are left over at the end of the day, just get put back towards our mission of providing, um, effective assistance to counsel. Uh, so, uh, those funds were used for that and there's a, a remaining amount of about forty-four thousand, uh, carryover, uh, which puts us within, uh, zero point six percent of, of our budgeted amount. Um, in, in the next three slides, we'll, we'll go into detail on those three categories of employee-related expenses. Uh, you know, program expenses or, or court-related expenses and then overhead, general and administrative expenses. Uh, but from a, from a high level perspective, are there any questions before I move to the next slide? Okay. Uh, so employee-related expenses, uh, historically, uh, this has just been one line item uh, and all expenses have been con, uh, conglomerated together. Um, and I, I think as part of the, the commission's requiring of, uh, of my position to be created, the financial manager, uh, there was a hope that there would be more transparency. Uh, so in order to, to, to move in that direction, you'll see for this one and then moving forward for our 2021 budget as well, uh, rather than just all employee-related expenses being in one line item, we'll break that out into the detail of how much of that was wages, how much of that is payroll, how much of that is health insurance, dental insurance, et cetera. So, uh, and then also there were, there were some, uh, administrative costs that were being handled by Squire, uh, that I was able to absorb those, those tasks, and so we didn't have to source that out to a third party. So there's a reduction in, in those two areas, uh, two forty-eight and two forty-nine. We consolidated those two accounts and then didn't need as much, so.
Hey Benjamin, I had questions.
Yes.
There was some discussion around the budget renewal, that there were some attorneys that had been hired, I think toward, you know, toward the end, certainly in the latter half, and I think in the fourth quarter, maybe end of third quarter. And, you know, I don't know if maybe we had lost other attorneys. Um, but you don't see much, or maybe it's just because they only ended up starting later in the year. You don't, and you don't really see that payroll cost.
Yeah, so, so to speak to that, it was, uh, in September that they were hired. Uh, and the, the two, the two increases, uh, in our, in our payroll costs for 2020 was one attorney was approved and then my position was approved. Uh, I began in June, uh, se- second half of June, uh, and then all four attorneys were hired in September. So there's only one full year of attorney wages, um, but we hired four of them of, that only had one-third of the year. And then my salary, half of it in the first half and then the second half, uh, went towards that fourth attorney, if that makes sense.
Okay, that does make sense, thank you.
Yep. Um, moving on to the next slide, so these are all of the court-related costs, um, the contracts that we have, the, uh, for, um, conflict attorneys, for investigators, for experts, uh, transcripts, et cetera. Um, there, there is an, an increase, uh, over the budget on this. Um, but, uh, that, that was just based on the types of cases that were received. Uh, and as we talked in our, in our budget presentation for 2021, um, we aligned our budget more to a five-year rolling average. Uh, so we'll see that, that we'll come in closer to our 2021 budget allocation rather than using a historical number. Historical budget number, we used a historical actual, so. But pending any questions on this?
What defines extraordinary expenses?
Uh, so extraordinary expenses, um, if there is a conflict case, um, then we pay for the attorney costs and all of the other costs associated with that, um, like experts and witnesses. Uh, because it's a conflict of interest, we can't tell them not to spend the funds for it. So those come through as, um, pass through to the county for the first seventy-five thousand. Anything above that, we absorb into our budget. So that forty-seven thousand is above the seventy-five that we were reimbursed by the county, um, that we absorbed into our budget.
So these are third-party, um,
Yeah.
uh, attorneys and assists?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Okay, and then we'll move to the next one. Uh, the final one is general and administrative and, uh, we, we made a lot of efforts to, to reduce this where possible. Um, because, uh, obviously every dollar that we spend on overhead is a dollar we're not spending on program. Uh, so we, we made a lot of efforts to reduce this and then you'll see in our 2020, well, you, you saw in our 2021 budget, we're, we're making further efforts to, to reduce this, uh, based on, on, on cutting some computer tech as we had some improvements this year, uh, and renegotiating better rates on our insurance. Uh, the other thing that I'll, I'll just point out kind of as an overall comment, uh, in discussing the budget, we had originally asked the county, uh, one of the, one of our new asks for 2021 that wasn't approved, uh, was for adding four additional attorneys. Uh, we went to the IDC, uh, and requested additional funding from them. They had some, um, non-lapsing funds that, uh, that they had, uh, that became available. Uh, we put in a request for, um, and they approved, um, two of those four attorneys, so offsetting that. So we'll, we'll be restoring, uh, two hundred thousand of the, um, IDC funding that was originally cut and we'll be getting an additional two hundred thousand that'll provide two more attorney positions.
You and I talked about five weeks ago, but how many attorneys do you have on hand?
Just on district or district and JV?
The, the entire, um, contract.
I'm going to turn to Josh, who's thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six. Um, and that's, that's before that add of the two additional ones from the IDC.
So now about thirty-eight.
Hey Benjamin, my, my understanding of the guidance from the IDC was that they were not recommending hiring with those funds, that they were one-time funds?
Yes.
And so, I, I just want to be careful. I, I don't want an implied, you know, obligation, if they're one-time funds, in some ways you may be, um, not obligating the county, but, you know, maybe hiring attorneys that, if the county doesn't support that funding, may need to be terminated.
Yeah, and, and that, that's a good point. We, we, we did address that with the IDC. So, um, the intent is that these, these two positions that we'll be hiring are hired with the understanding that they will be a one-year term. And the intent is that they'll cover the, the calendar time that's being devoted for attorneys that are on the bomb case. So when the bomb case ends, those attorneys are, the, you know, they're hired with the intent that when the bomb case ends, their, their contract would also end. If that makes sense. Okay. Uh, so those, those are the financial overview. If there's any questions you have or any additional details, feel free to, to ask them. We'd be happy to provide any, any additional information requested.
Alright Benjamin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, on my agenda, it looks like we don't have, it looks like we don't have public comments listed, but is there it, on the, on the published one, is there public comments? We should have. We should have public comments. I I just noticed that we don't have that on here. It's, it looks like it's cut off on mine, on the printing, so I don't know if it was. But I would entertain, is it, is it on there?
No, but you're right, it should be.
Yeah. If the commissioners are okay, though, I think that's at our discretion for the most part. And so I'd entertain if there are any public comments. Seeing none, we will, we will move into our, into our closed meetings. Thank you.